All right, everybody. Good morning. It is Wednesday, February 19th, 2025. This is the regular meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. We begin with roll call, establishment of a quorum. Commissioner Miller and I, both being present, do constitute a quorum. And for the moment, the entire Board of Commissioners.
This is true.
Katie Jacobson's retirement took effect last Friday, and we're gonna miss her. First off, I'd like to present a proclamation for our consideration. It's in the matter of proclaiming February 20th, 2025, as Ben Jones' Day in Lincoln County. Whereas, as a young man living in Toledo, he pushed the bill through the legislature, splitting Lincoln County off from Benton County. And whereas, several years later, Mr. Jones again had a lasting influence on Lincoln County by sponsoring the state bill creating what is now US 101, originally known as the Roosevelt Military Highway. And whereas Mr. Jones exemplified the fighting independent spirit of Lincoln County by refusing to accept insults and poor treatment by Benton County officials, be it resolved that February 20th, the birthday of Lincoln County, be observed now and hereafter as Ben Jones' Day in Lincoln County, dated this 19th day of February 2025. Commissioner Miller?
I think this is great.
Okay.
I would second, or I would make a motion to approve this.
And, thank you, and I will happily second that. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
It's approved. We now move on to the consent calendar. Again, these are routine items or items previously discussed at previous meetings. Is there anything that you would like to highlight or pull for separate consideration, Commissioner Miller?
Uh, no, nothing for me today. And I would make an emotion that we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. We don't have a public hearing scheduled for today. We do have a couple of decision and action items, and the first one, I'm sure, is the appointment of a new Lincoln County Commissioner to fill
Alright.
the remainder of Commissioner Jacobson's unexpired term. Now, this isn't strict parliamentary procedure. You know, normally, we put a motion before us and then discuss it, but I'd just like to offer my thoughts on the process and where I would like to see us go. Invite you to do the same.
Sure.
And see if we've got agreement or not. You know, being around for a while does have its advantages sometime. Back in 2012, I was part of the process to appoint a successor to Don Lindley when he stepped down from the Commission. Then, as now, we are following the procedure that is outlined in state law to replace countywide elected officials. You know, I've heard sentiment from a lot of people, I imagine you have, Commissioner Miller, that they'd like to see this go to a special election. However, the Oregon Revised Statute specify that if a vacancy occurs in a countywide elected position, it is to be filled by the Commissioner and the person, Commissioners, and the person appointed will serve until the next general election. In 2012, this was a partisan position, and a party central committee forwarded the final names to the BOC for consideration. Because the voters have since made this a nonpartisan position, the job of reviewing and screening applicants fell to us. We had 26 applicants, and I really believe they reflected the depth and breadth of our communities. Such a rich variety of educational and professional experiences, life stories, and passion. Passion for the thing that drives me every day, and I hope it drives everyone in this organization, and that service to the community. What can we accomplish each day to make the lives of our constituents better? The three finalists that you and I have brought forward, Commissioner Miller, are all outstanding choices. I feel like I could serve productively alongside any of them. These are all people who understand the issues facing Lincoln County. And they understand the way, the basic way in which local government operates. So, how did I choose from among the three? Again, a very difficult choice. I considered many things. I reflected on what voters may have been looking for when they twice selected Katie Jacobson. Katie brought a lot of strengths to this job, including strong working relationships with two of the four major segments of the economy, commercial fishing and ocean science. They, along with tourism and timber, are the foundations of our economy. As supportive commissioner, Walter Chuck has worked to maintain and improve our fleet's access to necessary infrastructure. Through his role on the Ocean Policy Advisory Council and other bodies, he has been a strong voice for coastal and Lincoln County interests in shaping decisions that have a direct impact on our economy and our way of life. All of these have persuaded me that Mr. Chuck is the right applicant for the right position at the right time. Commissioner Miller, your thoughts, and I hope you'll join me in supporting Walter Chuck.
Yeah, yeah, well, thanks for your comments, and a lot of things to reflect on. You know, 26 community members. Pretty, pretty amazing to see that many individuals be inspired to do this work. And the work is not always easy. We have a lot of tough decisions we need to make, and when you look at this many people in the community looking for that common denominator in, you know, such a wide demographic of community members, you know, it's tough. And we work quickly. We have so much. Our palette of services really is so wide. A Commissioner is, is just constantly being challenged to be decisive and at the same time needing to be reflective. And, you know, as I worked my way through those 26 candidates, really looking at as deep as I could with that information to see, are these people going to have the right stuff, if you will, to do the work? And I think one of the things that the community doesn't always see is, is how deep the Commission goes into human resources management. It's a big piece of what we do. We tend to think about those outward things, but internally, there's a lot of hard work. Sometimes it has to do with union negotiations. Sometimes it has to do just with those management decisions in resolving disputes. So, the breadth and depth, as you said, is really quite wide-ranging, and this person is, I think, really gonna be kind of shot out of a cannon when, when they begin doing the work. And I know we've got a good team to help bring them up to speed as fast as we can, to be boots on the ground and be making the decisions that's gonna be required of them. We just had the resignation of a county administrator, our first county administrator. So, you know, there's a lot of moving pieces to this organization. We are in flux. We are in change as well. And how we internally keep our team pulled together and work outwardly is, is a lot to do. And, you know, when we got down to the final three, Mr. Heath decided to pull his application. I think he was a good individual. I'm looking forward to personally talking to all 26 candidates with individual conversations to answer their questions, but also show gratitude to those individuals. But when we got these three here, I really thought what was great about the proceedings was giving people a chance to hear from the candidates, really in long form. Because a lot of times in the, in the, in the typical candidate forums, I think what can be frustrating, especially for us, is being experienced, is knowing sometimes the candidate forums don't dig as deep as you would like it to, to show all the attributes of the candidates and, and sometimes get outside of, of maybe the traditional talking points that comes from looking at candidates. And I think this gave us an opportunity to focus on things that people might not normally see. So then, as we listened to these individuals, I just thought to myself, wow, this is great. We've got some, some really, really strong people. But I think for me, as I listened to them and looked into the people, looked outside of, you know, the, the wordsmithing or not, I think I found myself very much leaning as well to Walter Chuck. I just had a, I think he had that special something that spoke to me. And, you know, you and I may have had some disagreements lately, but it's great to know that we are in alignment. And I feel strongly about that as well.
Glad to hear that, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's nice, right?
It is.
Good.
You have anything more now, or would you like to make the process official with a motion?
Well, I, I would be happy to make a motion that we appoint Walter Chuck.
And I would second that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Commissioner Chuck. Shall we get some pictures of the new team? Walter, would you mind coming forward?
Commissioner, sorry. Oh, yes. Actually, before we do that picture, need to are you taking background? Will you accept the appoint?
I will accept the appointment.
Looking forward to serving our residents in Lincoln County.
Want us in front of the whiteboard or look up here from the crowd?
Let's go with the new guy.
It's going in front of the tires.
Oh, okay.
Shall we stick him as a note?
Yeah. Yeah. Put him on the hot seat.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Who should we look to?
I'll follow him around. Okay, here, my turn.
You guys got it? Okay, thank you. Work begins.
All right, now we move on to the second reading of Ordinance 540, the wildfire rebuild special property tax assessment. County Council Kristin Yule has the lead on this, and this is a familiar topic for us by now, but bring us up to date, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kristin Yule, for the record. Would you like the full text read or title only?
Title only.
Sounds good to me, too. Thank you.
Before the Board of Commissioners for Lincoln County, Oregon, Ordinance 540, relating to wildfire rebuild special property tax assessments in unincorporated Lincoln County and declaring an emergency. So Commissioners, this is the, a few times this has been before you. We did make some amendments at the last reading. So, are you comfortable with moving forward with approving this?
Yes.
Yeah, me as well. Thank you.
So we just need a motion now?
Okay, I would move. Let me get the exact language here for you. That we move forward with Ordinance 540, wildfire rebuild special property tax assessment.
And I'll second that motion, but before I call the vote, I just wanna offer a tip of the hat and thanks to our State Representative David Gombert. He actually sponsored the bill in the legislature that created this opportunity for wildfire-impacted counties. So.
And I would note to Commissioner Jacob's work on wildfire recovery. Very key.
Yep. I recently saw that. Oh, yes, yes, yes. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Yes, go ahead.
Now we move on to discussion and information. And the request will be before us to legalize North Three Rocks Road and Savage Road. Come on up, Michael, and please state your name for the record, though we all know you.
Of course. Michael Dwan, Public Works Director for Lincoln County.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for your time. I apologize for being what seemed like five minutes late to the meeting. You went through the agenda really quickly. As I believe you're aware, we have a bridge project out on North Three Rocks Road at Crowley Creek, a bridge replacement which was accepted or approved through the ODOT Local Bridge Program. We currently have an IGA for both design and construction funding. However, as part of that process, we have to verify that we have a valid right of way. And as you also may be aware, there are several roads in the county, numerous roads, where the legal right of way does not align with the physical road. And so the process to resolve this is to legalize a portion of the road. I discussed this with the county surveyor, where, you know, have a consensus on the approach we would take to it. And so we're hoping that the board would move forward to initiate those proceedings as allowed through Oregon Revised Statutes. I did bring this item before the board in October already. However, it has been four months, and there's not been an order to move forward. So I wanted to come before you again and, for one, to see if there were any questions or concerns with it. And also, since that time, the county surveyor has recommended that we also legalize a portion of Savage Road, which is just, it meets North Three Rocks Road right there at Night Park. And I believe there's a vicinity map included in your packet. So having the opportunity to move forward with it, for one, we'd like to move, bring back an order to legalize a portion of both of those roads and, at the same time, incorporate a portion of Savage Road.
Would you mind pulling that, that map up, PIO Lib?
Commissioner Miller, any questions or comments?
I don't really think so. I just wanna make sure. Thank you, Ken, for, you know, pointing out exactly what we're talking about here. And then as well, our surveyor Eli Adam and county engineer Andrew Blair. Appreciate them jumping in on this. Imagine you guys all work together very well.
I'd like to think so, yes.
I do as well. No, I don't think so. I think we need to move on this. Let's do it.
So County Council, process-wise, did we just give staff direction to prepare an order?
Yeah, I actually have an order prepared, so you just need, we need a motion that you're going to approve moving forward with the proceedings for legalization.
Okay, I would make a motion. We move forward with the proceedings for legalization.
I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
You have your marching orders, sir.
Thank you, Director. Appreciate it. Thank you, Eli and Andrew.
Okay, next we would have staff and partner reports, then Commissioner reports. No requests were submitted by deadline, so we move to public comments. And Mr. Lip, I know we had several written comments.
Couple of written comments for this meeting as it pertains to the commission vacancy.
And then there are two comments that have to do with forestry practices.
Okay. Thank you. Is anybody in the audience signed up? Oh.
No.
Okay, who do we have online? Okay.
Cynthia, can you hear us?
Cynthia, can you hear us?
Anyone else? Everyone else have audio? Mr. Gardner, could you just do an audio check for us to make sure we're piping you through the system?
Hello? Can you hear me? Hello?
I feel like he's muffled.
I'm here.
I can hear Ms. George.
Ryan, I feel like we can hear you, but it's.
Okay, so I wrote this letter in regards to the.
Hold on. We're just working on audio here. Just stand by.
So we can hear you.
Okay.
I think we're there.
All right. So I, I wrote that letter in regards to the upcoming logging practices that are gonna be going on Highway 20. And my concern is safety. As we know, this is a deadly part of the highway. And Warehouser is gonna be not only building roads between Newport and Toledo, but they're also gonna be bringing log trucks out. And so in this tourist season, we're gonna have to deal with extra added safety concerns. And no one has consulted the fire departments, the police departments to start warning the public that this is gonna be taking place for quite some time, because they're gonna be clearing from basically Highway 20 to the bay. because they're gonna be clearing from basically Highway 20 to the bay. All those trees are coming down. So I would hope that you'll work to preserve the safety of all, not only the locals that are gonna be traveling that deadly stretch of road, but the tourists. You've got those signs that you could possibly place, the electronic, big electronic lit-up signs for warning people of the traffic dangers in that section. So that's something to be considered. I hope you guys will consider that. That's all I gotta say today.
Okay, thank you for your input.
Thank you, Cindy.
Any other public comment?
I'll just note regarding Mrs. George's comment, she also did provide the notification and the project plan that she's describing. It's in the public comment.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, for everyone watching, that those resources are online, so thank you, Cindy.
Anybody else? Well, if not, mention the next upcoming meetings of the Board of Commissioners will be on alternating Wednesdays, 10:00 AM.
Oh, pardon me, where are you at right now?
Item 13, other scheduled meetings.
Oh, are we gonna jump into Commissioner reports?
None were submitted by the deadline.
Okay, so no verbal reports from you?
No, nothing verbal or written.
Okay, very good.
So.
Continue.
And I guess it's time for us to adjourn, and thank you all for being here.
All right, thank you, everyone.